Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Culpeper County School Board to order. Ms. Jameson, we'll call all our present. And, well, good evening. Before we commence with our moment of silence, the school board would respectfully ask your indulgence for one moment. The week before Thanksgiving was a difficult one for Culpeper County Public Schools. We lost a dedicated retired educator who was a long-serving tennis coach and husband to Elizabeth, Mr. Ron Hutchins. We also lost a vibrant young former CCPS Teacher of the Year and present 4th Grade teacher at AG Richardson School. Lovingly known as Ms. Fun, Kristin Fundenberg passed away. We are saddened by our school family's loss and hope you will keep them in your thoughts at this time. Thank you, and please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We are now going to have the presentation or recognition. Our first event tonight will be with Mrs. Rich Tarski and the Men's Acappella Choir from Eastern View High School. Ms. Rich Tarski?
Step up. Put the points out.
Hello. Thank you for having us here tonight to perform some fun holiday pieces for you. We are Aftermath, EVHS Men's Acappella. We hope that you just sit back, relax, and enjoy our music. You can dance and sing along if you want to. Thank you again. My name is Diego Estrada.
And what grade are you in?
I'm a senior. I'm in the 12th grade.
Step in, step in. It's okay, they don't like it. All right. All right, boys, have some fun. Loosen up. Here we go. Do we have it? Good?
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas with lots of presents to make you happy.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas with mistletoe and lots of cheer,
with lots of laughter throughout the years from the bottom of my heart.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas with lots of presents to make you happy.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart.
I wanna wish you a Merry Christmas with mistletoe and lots of cheer,
with lots of laughter throughout the years from the bottom of my heart.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Feliz Navidad.
Prospero año y felicidad.
Felicidad.
So before we go, we just wanted to say thank you for having us one more time.
And we wanted to invite you to our concert that is this Thursday night at 6:00 PM at EVHS.
We would love to see you there. We wish everyone in this room a safe and happy holiday, Feliz Navidad, and Merry Christmas. Hope you guys enjoy.
And Happy Hanukkah.
And you're welcome.
I'm Eduardo. I'm a senior. I'm a choir president, and I'm happy to be here today.
And I am Freddie, and I'm a senior, and I'm the Men's Choir representative.
Rock around the Christmas tree.
Yeah, we rock, rock, rock around the Christmas tree.
Yeah, we rock, rock, rock around the Christmas tree.
Yeah, we rock around the Christmas tree.
Rockin' around the Christmas tree at the Christmas party.
Ba doo wop wop.
Mistletoe on where you can see every couple tries off.
Ahm, ahm, ahm.
Rockin' around the Christmas tree at the Christmas tree.
Ba doo wop wop.
Later we'll have some pumpkin pie and we'll do some caroling.
Ahm, ahm, ahm.
Ooh, wop wop, ooh, sha na na na.
Ooh, wop wop, ooh, sha na na na.
Voices singing, let's be jolly day.
The halls are filled with holly.
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 Ahm, ahm, ahm.
Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday.
Ba doo wop wop.
Everyone dancing merrily in a new old-fashioned way.
Ahm, ahm, ahm.
Ooh, wop wop, ooh, sha na na na. Ooh, wop wop, ooh, sha na na na. Voices singing, let's be jolly day.
The halls are filled with holly.
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 Ahm, ahm, ahm.
Rockin' around the Christmas tree, have a happy holiday.
Ba doo wop wop.
Everyone dancing merrily in a new old-fashioned way. Yeah, we rock, rock, rock around the Christmas tree. Yeah, we rock, rock, rock around the Christmas tree. Yeah, we rock around the Christmas tree.
We wish you a Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas.
We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. The tidies we bring to you and your kin. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
So these are from FSA and from EVHS Choir. The boys are gonna take you guys eight points up.
Thank you very much to the Boys Acappella Choir from Eastern View. Our next award or presentation is going to be Ms. Mary Jo Hyde come down to the podium to tell us all about the VSBA Video Contest. We had second-place winners this year. Ms. Hyde?
Good evening, Madam Chair. I am gonna introduce Ms. Hyde.
Okay.
But we're pleased to have the Culpeper High School Introduction to Leadership class with us here today who won second place for their 30-second video for the VSBA High School Student Video Contest. And the theme this year was "We Are Better United Than Divided." So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hyde, and she's going to recognize the students. And then when the students come up and grab their certificates, we'll take their picture over. She pretty much said everything I had written down here to say, so thank you for having us. The students were tasked with creating a 30-second video around the theme "We Are Better United Than Divided." The video had to be entirely student-created, no adult or professional help. The videos were judged on how well they addressed the topic, the quality of the production of the video, as well as the depth of thought and creativity in the video. Contest was open to all Virginia Public High School students with only one submission per county, and I'm so proud of them for what they were able to pull together. They worked really hard on the production, realized it takes a lot of work to put together a 30-second video. So the students getting certificates were actually in the video. I have other students here who worked on the behind-the-scenes, writing the script, creating the props, editing, all of that other stuff, so. All right, I have Landon Campbell. Sarah Lane. Melanie Yannis. Alexis Higgins. Maddie, Madeline Irman. She couldn't make it out. Lyric Powers also. She couldn't make it out. Landon Walton. Okay, not getting certificates, but we also have Brayden Anthony. No, come on. Nana Panaki and Neva Pearson.
This project includes physical and mental health, validation from others, depression, finding motivation, addiction, and anxiety. These are very difficult problems to deal with on our own, but you are not alone. A simple solution is asking for help, whether it's a therapist, your parents, or even just a friend. That's why in Virginia Public Schools, we know it's important to remember to work together and uplift one another, because we are better united than divided.
Thank you. I'm a little biased. I thought it was the best one there. But that, we all did, actually. Moving on to our student recognition for the 2020 All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble. Mr. Adam Roach.
Good evening. We are here again honoring Ian Larkin for, once again, earning first trumpet at the All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble, which took place, the performance took place on November 16th at the Virginia Music Educators Conference in Richmond. This was, of course, via audition, and I would be remiss if I did not mention that, of course, Ian has been before you several times for his musical adventures. At this point, what he has accomplished musically is quite unprecedented in the history of Culpeper County, and I dare say you would be hard-pressed to find anyone in the state of Virginia who has accomplished what this young man has musically in his four years of high school. He is also, he represents Eastern View very well. He represents Culpeper County very well. He's also a product of Culpeper Middle School, my dear wife, band director there, of course. We are very proud of him, as all of us should be here. Thank you.
If Ms. Tiffany Rich Tarski is still with us, yes. We have the 2023 Virginia Music Educator Honors Choir. Tiffany?
Hello. If I could have Maren March come forward and Ava Conway come up here. Every October, our seniors and choir get the privilege to audition for a very select ensemble. It's, all seniors in the state of Virginia get to audition for about 120 spots, and for each voice part, there's probably about 20 slots. Would you say about 20? 20. So in the entire state of Virginia, every public school, every senior, every private school as well, they get to audition for Virginia Music Educators Honors Ensemble. This year, we were really excited because we had somebody make the ensemble and somebody who became an alternate of the ensemble, which is huge. And so beside me is Ms. Maren March, who made the ensemble as a soprano II, and also Ms. Ava Conway, who is an alto I. And what they had to do was to audition was sing a song, an art song that's college-level, and also had to sight-read at a Level V sight-reading, which is out of six levels. They did really, really well. I'm so proud of them. And we went down. Maren and I got to go down in November, and she performed with this beautiful choir. But before she did that, we actually got stuck in traffic. On I-95, there was a crash, and we were in the car between Kings Dominion, I mean Caroline County and Kings Dominion for three and a half hours. So we got to sing every show tune to Joseph and the Amazing Keller Dreamcoat, and also, we checked out the Addams Family as well. These are memories that I will never forget, and I've had both of these ladies for four years, and they are fabulous. They're, they also have decided to try out for another ensemble at our school called Category 5, and to give a lot of their time for the sake of music, and they excel and sing very well. So I am extremely proud of all of your accomplishments over the years, and congratulations for making this choir and representing EVHS, even though you were two and a half hours late to rehearsal. So thank you so much, Maren and Ava.
Thank you, ladies. If there are any other students that need to leave at this time, please feel free to do so. Thank you. Congratulations. At this time, Dr. Bradz and Mrs. Anne Luckenbill will go to the podium. Whereas ANC Luckenbill represented the citizens of Salem District and the children of Culpeper as a member of the Culpeper County School Board from January 1, 2008, through December 31, 2023, and as a school board chair for one year and vice-chair for four years. And whereas, Mrs. Luckenbill represented the educational needs of all children and showed a continuing and tenacious interest in quality programs, business community partnerships, including career partners, gifted education, and the importance of facility maintenance and adequate space planning for Culpeper County schools. And whereas, the student population increased 14% since she became a board member. And whereas, Mrs. Luckenbill was a huge advocate for the safety of students and staff and a passionate supporter of the new career and technical facility. And whereas, the school board oversaw many important accomplishments during Mrs. Luckenbill's years of service, including tremendous progress in student achievement and the renovation of Culpeper County High School, the installation of baseball, softball, field lighting, and press boxes, the installation of bus stop arm cameras, the installation of security vestibules at all of the schools, the installation of the transportation modular, the construction of the new CTE facility. And whereas, Mrs. Luckenbill has served on numerous committees throughout her term, including the CCPS Administrative Administration Committee, 15 years, Career Partners Board, 12 years, Culpeper, the Gifted Advisory Council, eight years, and the CCPS School Health Advisory Committee, six years. Now therefore be it resolved that the Culpeper County School Board and the Superintendent of Schools join the community in expressing their sincere gratitude to Mrs. Anne Luckenbill for her willingness to serve on the school board, for her dedication to the betterment of our school division, and for the other special gifts she brought to the board with her service, adopted December 11, 2023. Thank you, Mrs. Luckenbill. Mrs. Luckenbill, how about a few words?
So Tony's making me do this. He said I could not not say something.
I will write that down. Okay.
And this is not my preferred way to talk to anyone. You know I like one-on-ones and small groups. So having said that, I'm gonna oblige Tony and say a few words, or several. So first of all, Kelly.
Yay.
I am delighted to pass it to Kelly. I don't know where to look. Y'all are in good hands, as you know. And Kelly, thank you for your passion, experience, and selflessness during your campaign. It was impressive. So in the past six months or so, people have asked me if I'm ready to be finished. The answer is yep, I'm ready to be finished, and this is the way to go. This is, this is the way to do it. Everyone's on good terms, no hard feelings. It's time. When I started this 16 years ago, my youngest child wasn't even in school. He's now a sophomore in college. So it is beyond time for me, for Jean, and for Salem to have new representation. I've also been asked the most challenging parts of my 16 years, and there were some. My first term was tough, as some people in the room remember. That was a tough term. And I would say the second was the full-scale redistricting for Yowell Elementary, when pretty much every elementary school was touched. And elementary parents don't like to change their schools. And the school board and administration took a lot of heat for those decisions, which in the end have all worked out very well. which in the end have all worked out very well. By far, the hardest time was during COVID. I really don't want to talk about COVID. We all want to move past COVID. But remember when school board meetings were must-see TV? Because there was nothing else to do? It wasn't all that fun to be on the receiving end of the must-see TV. But I stand by what this district did, sending kids back to school, thanks to leadership in this room and the school board. I think we made the right decisions at every turn. So while I'm ready to be finished, what I'm not ready for is to lose the friendships in this room. People, the friendships in this room were forged in fire. And two of the prime examples are sitting here. Without going into details, we're friends today, we haven't always been, and I'm grateful. I was going to say something about Randy, she's not here, so I'll have to tell her in person. Rob? When I started on the board, there was a concern that I thought needed to be fixed at an elementary school, and I couldn't understand why you couldn't help me fix that. So I appreciate your education and your patience with me, showing me the processes. Pearl? Talk about forged in fire. Without going into details in the public forum, I appreciate your patience and willingness to trust me over time. And I probably could give similar examples for just about everybody sitting in this room right now. But I got to share one more. Dr. Bradz? I don't know if you remember this story, but I sure do. It was your first, it was our first meeting after you took the position. You were calling board members into your office one by one for a little introduction and chat. So we had only met in the interview process, and then you were calling us in for one-by-ones. So I went to Floyd T. Benz. Okay, full disclosure, I love Bobby Johnson, still love Bobby Johnson. So before I left my house, I sent Bobby a text. And I said something like, "Meeting with the new superintendent, don't know what this is going to hold." So I go to central office, sitting in that, in the Benz area, in the lobby, and you come out of your, Pearl's there. You come out of your office holding the phone into your doorway. And you said, "Ms. Luckinbill, just so you know, I have Dr. Johnson's phone number now, so all text messages are going to me." And I said, huh. And you turned around and walked back into your office. And I said to you, Pearl, that would have been a good thing to know. And you were like... So I don't remember much about that meeting with you, because I was focused on, oh my gosh, what did I say to Bobby? So I got out to the car, checked my texts to Bobby, and it was benign. It was, thank goodness, it was benign. I hadn't said anything too terrible. Since that time, talk about a relationship forged in fire. I'm proud to say that Jean and I call you and Kim some of our closest friends. So I will miss the friendships in this room very much. And with that, I don't know how to end this. Be nice to each other, put kids and teachers and families first, foremost, every time. And you'll do great things. I did it.
Thank you, Mrs. Luckinbill. That was lovely. Thank you, Dr. Bradz. We are now moving on to the Superintendent and Principals Report. Our first is the Superintendent Student Advisory Group Report. Eastern View High School Senior James Max Clemens.
That'll be extremely difficult to follow, but I'll try my best. So I'm Max Clemens, a senior at Eastern View High School and Mountain Vista Governor's School. And I'm here to share a little bit about our vision, goals, and function for the Superintendent Student Advisory Group this year. So I'm a first-year member. This is my first time participating in Student Superintendent Advisory Group, or SSAG, as I'll abbreviate it from now forward. And so far this year, we've really focused on attendance. Our, our main goal has been reducing chronic absenteeism. We're trying to get numbers down to where they were pre-pandemic levels, before the pandemic. And some of the ways that we've thought to do that are introducing incentives. So at this point, a few months into my joining of the club, our organization, we've come up with several key ideas that we think might be able to lead to higher productivity and more students coming to school in the future. And these include incentives such as perhaps offering a field day or type equivalent based or contingent upon attendance during first, second semester, or possibly per quarter. And we've also thought of doing raffles, depending on attendance-based raffles or things of the sort. And lastly, we've thought about introducing more mental health resources, because one of our additional goals, in addition to trying to find incentives to keep kids coming to school, is understand their motivations for not coming in the first place and really address those core issues. So we've found that mental health problems may be a potential issue. And if we're able to solve more mental health issues in our school system, we might be able to reduce chronic absenteeism. So far, we're just in a brainstorming phase, but I'm really hopeful from the advocacy and ideas that have come out so far in our group that we'll be able to see sustained change and actual change going into the future. So I'm really proud of our organization, and I'm hopeful for what the remainder of this year holds. Are there any questions this time?
Thank you, James. Are there any questions for James? Ms. Smith?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you and really impressed with your presentation, but really your heart and what you're doing. So thank you. And I think we can have great ideas, but when we get them from the students, that's probably more powerful than anything. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, James. Thank you. Mr. McWilliams, principal of Sycamore Park Elementary School, will give his report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Bradz, thank you for having us tonight. To get the presentation started, Mrs. Kikowski and Mrs. Pendleton are going to talk about some of the clubs that we've been able to offer the last few years at Sycamore Park.
Good evening. I'm excited to share some of the awesome things happening. Sycamore Park is fortunate enough to offer before and after-school clubs again this year. So we just wanted to take some time to share those more with you all.
Hi, I am in drama and choir, and I love them both so much. I love drama because there's so many fun memories that I've made last year, and I can't wait to do it this year. I love choir because it's just so fun, even though we've only had one practice, but it's so fun just to sing with all my friends. I can't wait to do it in middle school, and I'm getting so prepared for it.
Hi, I'm Parker, and why I like drama is because if you're acting, you don't have to be afraid of what someone else will think of you.
Hello, my name is Connor, and I'm the founder, or more accurately, the helper to create the Gamer Club. What I really like about the Gamer Club is, well, it's like a board game club, but what I really like about it is that there, there's new games, there's new board games you could play. My dad's helping out with teaching like more new board games each week, so...
Hi, my name is Perla, and I like Math 24 because I like to do math.
Hey, my name is Keone, and I'm in Math 24 because it's challenging, and I like challenging stuff.
Hi, I'm Claire. I work for Panther Press, and some of the reasons I love working for Panther Press is because all my friends are in there. We do writings, we do interviews, you can be a part of Panther Pride Spotlight. And, and you know, it's just overall a gaming club, and I love being a part of it.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and I'm in drama. Why I like drama is because I get to sing and dance and be on a stage.
Hello, I'm Dana Scott, and Panther Press, I think, is good for interacting with other people and writing. So if you want to join, you could. I'm also in Sycamore Gamers. I love interacting with people playing board games, and it's fun.
Hi, my name's Abby, and I am in drama because I like to like act and be on stage.
Hi, I'm Olivia Peacock, and I, I am in Panther Press because I like being in writing.
Hi, my name is Ava Santos, and I'm in the gaming club. And my favorite thing about gaming club is how they have all the cool fun games.
It's Ring Panther Press, which is our student-led newspaper club. So it's myself and Ms. Lewis Jenkins. Students collaborate each month to decide what new articles will be featured in the monthly paper. Each month, students include Panther Pride Spotlight, which is an outstanding student that's been nominated by their teacher, the VIP Interview, which is a Q and A with a staff member, recent events, and last month, students decided to include our fifth graders going over to CTEC, an advice column that's done by the fourth graders, and they can actually give some pretty good advice, a comic book, which is a comic strip that adds on to a storyline each month. We have 15 student reporters that are in fourth and fifth grade, completely student-led, from deciding what articles will be featured, to conducting the interviews, to taking the pictures, and revising. The paper is published by sending it out to staff and posting it on our Facebook page. Next up, we have the Sycamore Park Gaming Club. This is sponsored by Mr. Dyer. It includes third through fifth grade students, and they have 18 students in that club. This is student choice, so students can decide if they want to bring in a favorite game that they have or learn a new board game, card game, and dice game. This helps students with collaboration, teamwork, and sportsmanship skills. And I'm going to pass it off to Ms. Kikowski.
All right, next is our 24 Club, and it's sponsored by Ms. Brooke Smith. And she's kind of added a different spin to this, so, and really expanded it past any vision that I had for this. But in grades three through five, she has 14 students that come and kind of have lunch with her weekly. And it's a year-round part of her day. She puts on weekly challenges, and then they earn little brag tags for her necklace. And then how she's taking that and turning it into an after-school club is for those students that are really engaged and really on the same ability level and just really focused on the game. So they're able to compete in our countywide 24. Then we have drama, and this is what really kind of started our whole clubs and then with the Estor funds. But we had a student reach out to Mr. McWilliams last year and really demand that we have drama, that we have a performance. She was getting ready to go on to middle school, so she kind of had that vision and knew that because her mom worked at Floyd T. Benz and helped with that. So last year, Ms. Weaver kind of did it on a smaller scale. There was about 20 students, and they put on The Trial of the Big Bad Wolf. This year, sponsored by Ms. Letario, Ms. Yule, and Ms. Greeney, they're going to do Frozen Junior, and we have 45 students participating. We're going to do our performance at our own Little Fine Arts Festival on February 28. Coding Club, that's getting ready to get started with Mr. Weagle in the second semester. We have 18 to 20 students already signed up, and they just take the basics of programming through scratch. And then they're going to learn about if-then statements, some loops, variables, problem solving. They'll probably be able to teach me something, because my sister's a programmer, and I still don't get it. And then after that, they're going to be able to build their own games. So that's really cool. And then Choir, which is sponsored by Ms. Weaver and Ms. Pentel. They have 29 students this year, which has doubled in the past, thanks to Ms. Pentel helping Ms. Weaver for our fourth and fifth grade students. And then you can see that we have some upcoming performances. They're going to the Culpeper Baptist Daycare. And then they'll be local at our school coming in December and February, and then a joint with some of the high schools and other elementary schools.
All right, now, a quick update on Loads of Love. This past summer, in, thanks to our custodial staff and to Doug Robson, Operations, we were able to clean out another room in the basement to expand that program. Loads of Love continues to be very well-used. Every time Ms. Fallon and her volunteers open it, we get a lot of people to come in and shop. So it's a, the program is fantastic. So I'd like to thank all the volunteers that make that possible. The other thing that was really cool this year was what we were able to do with, thanks to Rack Room Shoes. Last spring, Rack Room Shoes, someone from their corporate office reached out to me, and they were like, "Hey, would you like to participate in this program?" I was like, "Sure." They're shoes that fit programs. So I had no idea that it was going to be as widespread as it was. I just thought we'd be able to get a few pair of shoes for some students. Thanks to the generosity of our community and Rack Room Shoes, they raised nearly $3,000 to buy shoes for our students. So last month, we were able to take some third through fifth grade students actually to Rack Room Shoes to select their own shoes. We picked out the ones for the younger students. We didn't know if we had time to walk around and do all of that. But it was a fantastic experience. And again, just the generosity and the caring community that we have made that possible. So I'd like to thank all the volunteers for Loads of Love and Rack Room Shoes and the community. So at this time, we'll take any questions about the clubs that we have or these programs.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Brenner?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. And the comment would be, Mr. McWilliams, your leadership allows the staff to decide they want to do, and you give them freedom for all that to happen, or all these things, we wouldn't be seeing. And your reputation of helping with Loads of Love and stuff as far as your school then allows others to look at and say, hey, is there a way we can help out, like with the Rack Room Shoes? So I think your entire staff shows how much they care about the children and the school. Something to be very proud about.
Absolutely, thank you. We have such a caring, kind staff. They do a tremendous job each and every day, and, and that trickles down to the students, and it's a very tight-knit community. So thank you.
Is that your head in that photo, putting the shoe on the little girl?
That, that is. And so we did take some younger students, if their siblings were in third through fifth. We did take some younger students there, so I was helping try on a beautiful pair of shoes there.
Ms. Suchus?
I enjoyed the Spring Arts Festival last year, and The Big Bad Wolf Trial was fascinating. The kids did a great job, and I look forward to the springs. Thank you all for all you do for the kids outside of the classroom.
Absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Burnett?
Yes. I just had, what was the name of the play you're going to present coming up?
It's Frozen Junior this year.
Frozen Junior, okay, great. Want to make sure everyone heard that.
Yep, Frozen Junior, and I've heard them practicing. They sound really good, so we're excited for it.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all.
Everything, thank you. We will now open our public hearing on the draft 2023-2025 Division Strategic Plan. We'll take any remarks, all remarks under advisement, but will not comment at this time. If there is anyone present who would like to comment on the divisions plan, please state your name and district when you address the board. Thank you very much. And if there's anyone present, please come forward. If there are no comments on our Division Strategic Plan, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you. And it is now time for delegations. I don't have any names signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to approach the board for anything? Please come forward. Tonight, we have no delegations then, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda as presented, both A and B? Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We are now up to item eight, action items. And the first one, I'll turn to Dr. Bradz for a quick introduction.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the next several items are items that have been previously shared, discussed, and also reviewed with staff at our December 1 retreat at the central office. The first item is the five-year... central office. The first item is the five-year CIP, which upon your approval, we will submit to the county and that at a point in time, we will present our plan to the Planning Commission as a part of the county's budget process. For item A, the five-year plan, again, which has been reviewed with you, administration recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have now or at your deliberation phase.
Are there any questions at this time? Then, is there a motion then? Is there a motion to approve the CCPS five-year capital improvement plan?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item B is our approval of the Budget Work Session Schedule. Dr. Bradz?
Again, Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, the item that we have worked through together in terms of the planning process for the 2025 budget. Administration recommends approval of this budget schedule. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion to approve the Budget Work Session Schedule?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And after the public hearing, this, item C is the approval of the 2023-2025 Division Strategic Plan. Dr. Bradz?
Yes, Madam Chairman, once again, this is the approval of our two-year extension of our strategic plan. As we shared with you, many of our accomplishments and things that we would still like to continue to work on. The strategic plan has been posted on our website and also in board docs. Would be remiss if I didn't say, very much appreciate staff, very much appreciates board involvement and suggestions and participation with this process. After all, it is your strategic plan. So following the goals that you've established, administration recommends approval of this revised strategic plan.
Is there a motion to approve the 2023-2025 Division Strategic Plan?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Deborah, Ms. Desalee. Motion did carry. Thank you. Item D is what was discussed at our retreat and it is the approval of increased flexibility related to the high school hybrid four-by-fours master schedule, schedule format to accommodate students and staff efficiency. If we are in favor of this, would someone on the board please make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Hutchins?
I just want to reiterate my concern from the retreat that this is not eliminating the AB component of four-by-four. It is allowing more flexibility for scheduling and given the ability of, as they call them, dancing partners to work out for students to continue year-long classes, that will be taken into consideration. Given the fact that we are offering far more opportunities off-campus, such as Mountain Vista, Tremenda Scholars, and the new teacher lab school, again, it, we're offering more, which complicates the schedule more. But I have had conversations with staff and I'm assured that the AB component will remain as long as it can be worked out to do so, so that students, either in an AB format or in a double-block format, can continue to get a year-long, get some of the classes year-long.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. That was a comment. It was not a motion to amend, was it?
No, no, no. Just a motion to amend, just clarification of my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Then our motion to approve the increased flexibility related to the high school hybrid four-by-four master schedule format to accommodate students and staff efficiency has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Superintendent and staff reports, superintendent update. Dr. Bradz?
Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, I'm pleased to report that we're in excess of over 500 surveys for the budget, pre-budget work that we're attempting to do based on your budget schedule. If you noticed on that schedule, it said that budget survey will close, close of business on the 15th, so that's this week, this Friday. So everybody out there in TV land and has access to a computer, cellphone, or whatever, please take the opportunity to take a very quick survey that staff worked on and we shared with the board that it's much quicker, I would say, more intuitive, and gets at priorities of individuals better than what we did in the past. So it's, we hope it's an improved instrument and we will see from the results as we disseminate that information with you. So just notice that it's out there. It will be open through Friday, close of business. Again, be happy to answer any questions you may have on the survey and the change of the survey, but just basically an announcement to please get out there and do those surveys. Doing well right now with the participation, but we need some additional participation. As I see Ms. Hoover over there nodding at me saying, yes, need a few more hits on that. Happy to answer any questions you may have or our staff as well. Thank you.
If there are no questions at this time, we go to our finance report with Mr. Shomo.
Thank you. We'll start with the enrollment, which kind of drives everything. Right now, for all practical purposes, we're kind of even. The good thing is, unlike previous years early on, we continue to grow every month. This past month, we picked up another eight kids from the previous month. So that's a good thing. Instead of losing kids, we continuously picking up kids for this. I don't know how good it is for our schools, but it's good, real good for us. Like I said, right now, we're basically, for all practical purposes, at an even state now. Next one, still the same spread. We might have some kind of adjustment to the state revenue after we get through with the latest round of governor's proposals for the budget and that will be all on the state revenue side. But now, we're not really anticipating any changes right now. The next one is the expenditures, same thing there, same, got the same split of all the different categories. This is expenditures by month. And one I really looked at is the next one. These expenditures by month, by percentage, believe it or not, they're mirroring last year as far as the percentages of budget we spent. Last year's time, we were at 73% remaining and we're exactly the same this year. So that shows you how consistent this year has been to last year and I'm knocking wood for that, which is really good in my world. But right now, we have kind of keep meeting our goals and what we set aside for the budget and we're right on track right now for the first half of the year almost, really. So, any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Shomo? Then at this time, Mr. Shomo.
All right, go to the next section.
Yes.
We're going to tag-team this next section of myself and Dr. Bradz.
Right, for the operations report, yes.
The first thing you see there is the new practice fields and green space behind the visitor section at Roman Field. The biggest thing happened this between last meeting and this meeting, they put some fencing around up there to keep the balls up on the playing field so they won't roll down off of there and into the creek into that fence row. That's new. Playgrounds, Yow was actually improved. Our maintenance departments are constantly monitoring the mulch that's in these playgrounds because between the insurance and the government, they like to have a little padding in there and like that little, when somebody falls, they like a bounce factor. And we always are testing that, make sure we're into those tolerances. Big thing going on and I've got to be careful where I phrase this because this is the Ag Storage Building. I like to call it nothing, but my boss has warned me. And, but that is really taking shape. The containers are out there and we're also, right now, we'll actually scrape the asphalt back. So this is really going to start taking shape over to Christmas. And that's another big, big thing, I think. So fan motor replacements that our maintenance department were able to do at Foyt Bens. Road repairs, turnarounds for bus locations, and then we're trying to be good neighbors with property owners. And this is just another example of that. If a person's kind enough to let us turn around in their land, we make sure that if it gets rutted out, we can go out there and we'll put some gravel down and scrape it down, make it level. And just trying to be a good neighbor with them because they've been a good neighbor with us. And it's really worked real well. Foyt Bens, it's hard to believe that that school's got enough age on it that we were going back and replacing some steel stuff. And this is in my mind, the basically same as steel exhaust stand for our kitchen. Another spin-off to the field down there we just put in, we're able to, with the contractor down there, to put in some new parking areas for our bus transportation folks. This is desperately needed because it was between the new buses we added and whatnot. It's kind of crowded down there with the parking we had. So this has been completed with the contractor and has put another 20 to 30 spaces in there for our bus drivers to park around the outside of it, excuse me. Other items, they had 360 work orders and 367 new ones. And the big thing there is the, you know, they keep working and working them down in the time that we are giving them. Food Service had another great month in my book. Every time I see the arrows pointing up, I love it. And this also goes into say, for your decision you guys made to get our middle school, there's free lunches and it's, you can see that they're participating. And it's a good thing. It's a real good thing. And this was another one that I had a hard time digesting. No. You're killing me for that. But smoothies, spinach, you know, the fresh spinach of the month, I put in a smoothie. So I guess, okay. Technology. The big thing here is they provided 30 used Dell laptops to FRC. Our technology department does a nice job of making sure that we're functioning every day. And when I saw this, these laptops that were repurposed for that, that's just another thing. EVHS auditorium and the auditorium and the cafeteria areas, we're working on that now through some of the grant money we received last year for construction. It's upgrading all that stuff. Basically, it's upgrading what we have there because we know what we need now, I suppose, when we built the building. So that's a real plus. Security, I think the big takeaway here was that the, we made some hardware changes to provide for up to 30 days after the THAC incident review. We before were only 10, but we were able to upgrade that hardware. Now, you got 30 days to actually go back and look at incidents. And the next one, Dr. Bradz, I'm going to tag-team this. Transportation.
Dr. Bradz?
Thank you, Mr. Shomo. Just briefly, a few things on transportation. First slide there shows stop-arm violations for September. The next slide will show October. Let me tell you what you're looking at. You're looking at a number of citations that are reviewed and these are by the company saying they may be possible violations. So the 272 is not a 100% passed and extended stop-arm camera, as I've talked to the company, but it's a possibility and sends it back to the locality, meaning law enforcement, to make that determination. We appreciate the help and work with Sheriff's Department working on this. They have three officers, not full-time dedicated to, but three different officers that work interchangeably with this program to confirm the citations and see if the citations are approved. And you'll see on this slide and the next slide, the different citations, that there's enough in the video to issue a citation for the $250 civil fine. And again, remember, we have full fleet installation, which is very rare in the Commonwealth. The approval rate on October in the previous slide of September, September's just over 50%, dropped a little bit in October. The state average is around 50% of the possible violations to actual violations. So we're right on par with where we need to be pursuant to company representatives telling us that. Both slides, you'll notice that there's a slide that says in-state, 95% and 95.5 and 95.3. What are those others from? Out of state. Welcome to Culpeper. If you're visiting, don't pass our school buses. And if you're residents, don't pass our school buses because there could be something in the mail and it's not a Christmas card. So we're making progress on this and we appreciate the board's support in this endeavor. Next slide, please, sir. Just routing update of how many students have been routed this month, some routing changes that staff have dealt with and also as the build-out really has taken up a notch or two at Stonehaven. It's pushed capacity on our buses there in terms of our spare buses. Plenty of spares, but not many spares that are 77 passengers. So we're trying to get into the hopper of 77-passenger requests pretty quickly so that that's up and running by the first of the year in January. Next slide, please. Staff and we hired another trip driver and two more starting this month. Stop Finder, about 941 active users. Good news, bad news, this is a relatively new program for us still, but those folks who want to track where that bus is, that's what Stop Finder is. We're at about 15% of our routed folks that are using that. So remember, routing is to and from. So I would like, I don't know what the industry recommendation there is with Stop Finder. We'll get that for you at some point, but I think we could do probably a little better with our participants, our participation in the Stop Finder app in terms of locating buses. But it is, it is an option. It's not required and folks choose to sign up to use that app. And we're working on the fuel island situation that we've talked to you about many times with different meetings and in capital planning, et cetera, improvements to that area in general and the pumps and the Fuel Master system. Any questions of Mr. Shomo or myself? Dr. O'Brien sends his regrets, but he had a family task that he had to take care of and we said, you need to go do that and not spread yourself too thin this evening. So he obliged and we miss him because you're stuck with Mr. Shomo and myself. But we'll try to answer any questions you may have. Ms. Baker?
Are there any questions? Thank you, Mr. Shomo. Thank you, Dr. Bradz. Our next item, our board comments. And I think we back to this side. Ms. Brown?
Yes. I'll try to be very quick first and not last, is thank Ann for her years of service and her willingness to accept a newbie that, nah, I just really care about the kids. And I appreciate the support that you gave me. The other thing is, I'd like to thank Catalpa for re-electing me for four more years. And the video that we saw, I, all of us agreed at the conference that, no, that one should have won because it is so telling of what life is for our children today. And lastly, Merry Christmas. I hope you all have a great holiday, restful holiday, family, friends, or just sitting on the couch, whatever it is you like. So thank you again for a great year. And on to Mrs.
Ms. Suchas?
I too want to echo Ms. Brown's comments about Ms. Luckinbell. We've been on this ride for a while and I appreciate your level-headedness and your willing to focus on the children and keeping the board focused on the children as well. I want to apologize to the board in the committee reports. I failed to update the administration committee report. The November meeting was canceled. The November meeting was canceled. I want to thank everybody for their love and support. It's what's been keeping me going, my CPS family, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I love your family and treasure every moment you have with them. Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you, and thank you for your dedication, even in such a hard time, and we are all here with you, and we appreciate you. And Ann, I have to say the same thing, and the times we, I called with, okay, I don't understand this, help, and I'm a late, I'm a night owl, so if it was after nine o'clock, I had to wait until the morning, and then I would get the text when I woke up. But thank you for just your wisdom and your help, and yeah, in lots of ways, so I'd really appreciate it. And I'll probably still call you. So I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Richarsky, and no, I didn't say that correctly, but, and the acapella group, and what a bright spot that was tonight. I had a hectic day, and it really, when he said, sit back and relax, I did that and smiled through the whole thing. Thank you.
Ms. Luckinville?
I would only say, don't be a stranger. Y'all know where to find me, I'm easy to get to, and please, knock on my door either downtown, or you can come to my house if you want, but I look forward to continuing a relationship with all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Desalee?
Thanks. I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and also to thank Tiffany for the wonderful presentation this evening. It was a joy and just definitely lifted all of our spirits, and it was especially a joy seeing the all-male acapella group. You know, I love acapella, and I thought they did a great job. It was so fun watching them dance and try to nudge each other to get into it, and by the end, they really were enjoying themselves, and it was, it was a joy. Thank you so much.
Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Once again, thanks to all the directors and staff and teachers and volunteers for making school happen. Here we are, almost at the close of 2023. I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, and I hope we have even a brighter new year. Ms. Richarsky, amazing, you do amazing things. You came up at our retreat of how many classes you take on, and we were just blown away. And so thank you so much for all your work and all your effort with the students. It's amazing what you do. And congratulations to our students who won the VSBA video contest, Introduction to Leadership the Better Together. I'm biased, that was the best video, I'm sorry, but that was just so wonderfully done and put together, and just, I mean, when we were at the convention and we saw it, we were like, are you kidding me? They should be number one, because it was just so well-done, so professional. Let's see. Mary Jo Hyde, thank you for that. And Mr. Adam Roach, with your jazz ensemble, Ian Larkin, wonderful job, wonderful job there. And Max, thank you for your presentation. Stand-up, very well-done. And gosh, I could just go on and on, because you all are amazing. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Ms. Richarsky, I got it. Thank you for all you do. And Maestro, your concert was wonderful. Mr. Roach, it was great on the 7th of December, and I was so impressed with the number of 6th-grade students on that stage for a band, and they were fantastic, and 7th and 8th grade as well. So you got a whole bunch of good kids coming your way, I'm sure. Also, thank you to the teachers who got all of our students ready for the mock interviews. They were dressed for success, they were goal-oriented, and they knew what they were talking about. And thank you to Mrs. Lutz and the career partners, because that offered such a great experience for those students in their junior year, knowing what's coming ahead. It was a really great two days. I was there for one of them, but I know that it was wonderful both days. And also, let's see, what else is there? The, oh, I know, it's just Merry Christmas, and I went to say to Ms. Luckinville, I just like you. That's all. So Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, Buena Tale, Joyos Noel, y Fer Vain Nachen. It's Merry Christmas to all. Thank you. And now, we will have, what are we doing now? Let's see. We are up to information items. We have our committee reports on board docs, and the membership is also listed for November 30th on board docs. This is December 4th through the 8th, which was last week, I believe, was our maintenance department appreciation week. And if you haven't had a chance, please make sure you talk to all of our fine ladies and gentlemen in our maintenance department. Our future meeting dates, the Culpeper County School Board Capital Planning Committee is December 13th, School Board Office 8:30. The administration committee meeting is December 19th, School Board Office 8:00. The Culpeper County School Board Finance Committee will be January 8th at the county administration office, 5:15, and the regular, next regular school board meeting will be January 8th, right here at 6:00. We do need to go into closed session, so if Ms. Smith would read us into closed session.
Make a motion that the school board meeting and public hearing, oh, wait, I apologize. Make a motion that we go into closed session, that the school board convene a closed session at 7:17 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, the appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of instructional supplements for the 23-24 school year, the approval of substitutes for the 23-24 school year, the approval of 23-24 amended winter coaching supplements for CCHS and EVHS, the discussion, consideration, and assignment of administration staff, the self-evaluation of school board members, the discussion of student matters related to named students A and B for religious exemption as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A2, and consultant with legal counsel and briefings by staff members of consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such constitution, consultation, I can't even read, I apologize, or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Everything is really done.